Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting and the closed session meeting at 5:00 PM for the Arroy Grande City Council as well as the regular meeting following at 6:00 PM, Tuesday, November 28th. And I'm going to call the meeting to order. And can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Seacrest here.
Councilmember George here.
Councilmember Guthrie.
Here.
Mayor Protem Barnich here. Mayor Ray Russum is absent.
Okay, thank you for that, Jessica. And then if you'll all please stand to join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, I'll go ahead and open it up. Public comment for anyone who's in the audience. And seeing no one here this evening yet, I will go ahead and see if there's anyone online for public comment on the closed session items.
There are no members of the public on Zoom.
Okay, thank you for that, Jessica. And we will now recess to closed session. Do you have to announce it? Okay, and our city attorney will announce the closed session item.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So on closed session this evening, there's public employment pursuant to government code 54957 subdivision B, public employee appointment position city manager. There's labor negotiation pursuant to government code section 54957.6, conference with labor negotiators, agency designated representative city attorney, unrepresented employee city manager. There is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. And that is significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two of subdivision D of section 54956.91, potential case.
Okay, thank you for that. And we'll see everyone back here at 6:00 PM. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting of Tuesday, November 28th, 2023. And we are returning from closed session. And we are now into our regular meeting at 6:00 PM. And I'm going to call this meeting to order. And can we, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Seacrest here.
Councilmember George here.
Councilmember Guthrie.
Here.
Mayor Protem Barnich here.
And Mayor Ray Russum is absent.
Okay, thank you for that. If you'd all just join me in a moment of reflection. Okay, thank you for that. And if you'd all please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that takes us to agenda review. Is there any council member that would like to change the agenda?
And Mayor Protem, I have one announcement. We had a placeholder item on the agenda for an open session item regarding city manager employment. It's item 12A. And just to note that there will not be an open session item this evening on that.
Okay, thank you for that. And with that, that brings us to the closed session announcements. And city attorney Rosen will announce any reportable action from any of those items.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. There is no reportable action this evening. However, the council did not complete a closed session and will be reconvening at the end of the open session meeting to complete those closed session items.
Okay, thank you for that. And that takes us to item number six, which is special presentations. And this evening, we have an honorary proclamation designating December 2023 as Peace and Nonviolence Month. And we have Kathy Mink here to accept the proclamation. And let me take my glass off. Okay, and Kendra Polding is not here right now. Okay, if you want to go ahead and meet me at the podium, Kathy. This is an. Jessica, do I, it gets me? I just can't hear it, like up there. Okay, sorry. This is an honorary proclamation designating December 2023 as Peace and Nonviolence Month. Whereas it is the mission of the city of Arroyo Grande, the best place possible, to make Arroy Grande the best place possible for everyone who lives, works, and visits. And whereas the Arroy Grande community calls for local civic action to stop hate and biases that pose a threat to the safety of our people and neighborhoods. And whereas discrimination causes disparate and unequal outcomes in housing, education, employment, criminal justice, health, and leads to economic hardships, and racism, bias, and hate has no place in our society or in our community. We must protect the constitutional rights of everyone in our community and foster a community that is welcoming to all people regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, or sexual orientation. And whereas the city of Arroyo Grande is dedicated to preventing and opposing hate and intolerance in our communities. And whereas we recognize that a resolution or a single action in and of itself will not change a community, but rather that we are all responsible both individually and collectively for creating and fostering an anti-racist and unbiased community in our words and actions. And that we must actively acknowledge and stand up against bias and discrimination of any kind. And whereas education, compassion, and cooperation are key to understanding and embracing differences between people. And whereas on January 11th, 2022, the Arroyo Grande Council adopted a resolution adopting a diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice policy. And whereas the city of Arroyo Grande seeks to address systemic racism and inequality through our diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice policy. And whereas the city of Arroyo Grande is committed to supporting diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice in all facets of society. And whereas the city of Arroyo Grande believes diversity strengthens the community and will continue to stand firmly against hate and biases wherever it may be. Whereas a proclamation that the month of December be designated for promotion of these central goals of peace, nonviolence, and anti-racism will bring awareness and support the city's commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice in all facets of society and government. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Kristin Barnich, Mayor Protem, for Karen Ray Russum, mayor of the city of Arroyo Grande, do hereby proclaim December 2023 as Peace and Nonviolence Month. Very important, very long. Okay, and if you want to say a few words, there you go, Kathy.
Well, I'm just, I'm very proud to accept this for the Diversity Coalition San Luis Obispo County. We do promote diversity through a lot of different ways. Coalition building with partners of, like-minded partners. We do a lot of education outreach in the schools and in our community to adults. And it's a good thing that I'm receiving this for the coalition today because I just kicked off, I spent my day kicking off our education program for this year with a Schumash Titabium elder who presented his story and talked about his ancestors and his work to the eighth graders of Judkins and the eighth graders of Mesa. So that's about 500 students altogether. And tomorrow, he's going to go to the eighth graders at Los Osos Middle School and Polding. So last year, we had 17 such presentations to different schools in our county. So I'm very happy that we've gotten that program underway again. So thank you very much for this. I really appreciate it. And with all of the board appreciates it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, we'll move on to item 6B, which is.
Mayor Protem, can I jump in? We, 5B, we do have an ordinance on the agenda tonight. So if we could do a roll call, vote for that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Jessica. Okay, I will move for brevity that all ordinance read in title only. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And any abstentions? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. Okay, now we're to interim city manager communications, Mr. Robison.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Barnich. I have a couple, but I would really like to thank Kathy Mink and the Diversity Coalition for coming tonight. And thank the council for cooperating or coordinating that with us. And as an organization, we feel it's very important to promote the values that we've adopted over the past years. And we feel very strongly about those. And again, we appreciate the cooperation of the council. So I'd like to just jump to a couple other quick things. And if Jessica can put those up on the screen, just a couple of appreciations. On December 12th, we had our 46th Annual Turkey Trot. And the Lions Club and the Central Coast Athletic Foundation partnered and put that together. There was 227 kids out ranging from preschool to eighth grade. And there were a lot of participants. It was a great, a great event. Here's a couple of shots of the kids and the volunteers on the left. Took place at AG High. Beautiful track now that they have. Thank you. Using two laptops right next to each other is always interesting. So we had some professional photographers come out. Namu Love, Glenn Fuss, Milton Yin. They helped capture a lot of the great action shots that you can see. And then we had Adept Sound who volunteered to do the sound system during the maintenance of the press box at the high school. So upcoming holiday events, the Jingle Bell Dash is on December 3rd. It's just before the Holiday Parade, which is on the next, just the slide to the right. But the race begins at 4:30. And about 3:30, you can register to run in that race or have your kids run in that race. So it's a really fun event. We have the street closed down, so it's very safe. And the kids can run up and down through the village and on Branch Street. And then at 5 o'clock is our Sunday, on Sunday, December 3rd, this coming Sunday, is our Holiday Parade. Some more upcoming events. We have a Holiday Boutique and Art in the Park on Saturday, December 9th. And that is at Heritage Square Park at 10 o'clock in the morning to 4 o'clock in the evening. And it's just free entry. It's a, it's a really fun event as well. There'll be live music there and all kinds of jewelry and candles, things like that that folks make and they can sell. And then the last thing is the tree lighting and snow. That's at Elm Street Park. And that's on December 10th, the day after the Art in the Park. And that's in the evening on Sunday from 5:00 to 7:00. So that is well attended. It was a great event last year. And we're expecting the same or even better this year. So thank you. And that concludes my, my presentation and my updates. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Does anyone have any questions for interim city manager Robison? Bill, I just have one question or maybe for Ms. Sweeney about the village construction.
Sure.
And just maybe if we could get an update on the timeline. Most concerned about just the noise again after hearing from someone a couple of days ago.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, Shannon Sweeney can give some dates that she has been working on with JJ Fisher, our contractor. And kind of on the night work, which is probably the most impactful to folks.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. The update on the project in the village, I'll give you first account of the items. There are just over 140 sidewalk bands. There are 20 of those bands being left to do. The tree wells, they've all been cut and jackhammered, but they've been filled with base. They just need the rocks done. There are eight total crosswalks. Three and a half of those crosswalks are done, leaving us four and a half left to do. In terms of the counts, the limiting factor of those crosswalks, right now, the crosswalks are taking about two nights per half a crosswalk. So that's 4.5 times two times two is the number of days. So it's 18 days just to do the crosswalks. So we're anticipating that it will take about 18 more nights. In terms of the noise, which I know is of particular concern because I do hear those complaints as well. We have restricted the jackhammering noise, which is, tends to be the most egregious from 10:00 PM to 1:00 AM. And the contractor has brought in a much quieter generator because we recognize that that was one of the other loud sounds. The noise that we're having the most challenge with are the vehicle backup noises. The trucks have a particular noise to protect when they're driving in reverse. Those noises work wonderfully during the day when there are lots of other noises, but they sound particularly loud at night when there are no other noises. And we have not found a way to get around that, especially since it's required by OSHA law. That being said, the noise is a lot more intermittent now than it was before because the work that takes the most noise is the cutting out of the asphalt, where you have to take an impact hammer into the asphalt. But then when they're laying the brick or doing the forms for the concrete, that's not as noisy. So the noise is more intermittent. I know that that doesn't ease everybody's pain, but we're anticipating 19 more days. It's the 18 days of the crosswalks and then the last day for the sidewalk wrap at Mason and Branch.
Okay, thank you for that. Anyone have any questions?
So just to translate that, that's about four weeks because they're working days, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And there are other little things that are affecting the schedule. Things such as the night before last, the concrete plant went down. And so we couldn't bring the order in. So of course that delays it by a night. And then we are really trying to make sure that there are no plates in the village for events like Small Business Saturday and the Holiday Parade. So trying to rearrange the schedule so that we're not in the middle of a crosswalk at the end of a week also means that, you know, it, yes, it's four more weeks, plus or minus and probably plus a couple of days just because we're trying to arrange the schedule in order to incorporate all those wonderful events that are going to happen in the month of December.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Okay, that takes us to city council reports. And I'm sure we'll hear from the mayor when she returns on anything she needs to report out. I'm going to go last because I have to get, pull my reports up on the computer. Can we go to you, Councilmember George? Thank you.
My, my reports are brief. Excuse me. Five Cities Fire Authority has not met. Tourism Business Improvement had a special meeting on November 16. They just got an update from our marketing agency, an update from Visit Slocal and made a couple of budgetary decisions minor. And then Visit Slocal meets next Wednesday or next Thursday. And that's it for my reports.
I was quick. Okay, Councilmember Guthrie.
So for RAC, we received a presentation on the housing framework, which I think we've all seen two or three times now. There was also a presentation on a satellite-based evapotranspiration. Yeah, evapotranspiration, which gives a more accurate estimate of the water being used by, in agriculture. We did take another quick review of the water issues for Dana Reserve and did not change our position there. And that was it for RAC. This month, it was Regional Transportation, it's SLORDA, that's a regional transportation agency. The agency passed the annual audit with no corrections. The Strategic Business Plan results were presented. Ridership performance standards are still well behind pre-pandemic levels. So on that, that area, which is the number of riders per mile kind of, kind of data, certainly way behind on that. But on all the other performance standards, such as safety and maintenance and customer satisfaction, we were pretty much up to standard in almost every area. The electric bus, the bits for the electric buses came in way over budget. And so we did, we did authorize staff to look for some alternative additional grant opportunities. And I will say that it's on our agenda, at least the initial agenda, to approve a work order. So we must have been successful since I think it's unlikely they reduce the price. So it's good to see those electric buses will probably be used in the local agencies like here or in Paso Robles because they really aren't going to work that well for the longer range buses, probably will never be able to go over the grade. IWMA, we did do a technical assistance grant for a local startup for those who were at the economic, state of the economy review last week. That was the group that won the pitch there. So they did give them a $10,000 grant to work on a project that uses radar to look into a trash can and can pick up the signature of a lithium battery to avoid the, avoid that potential fire risk before it even gets in the truck. And there's some pretty significant fires resulting from that. Destroyed trucks, and one that destroyed an entire recycling plant back in Pennsylvania. So they've already had some really great initial success and looking forward to actually using those in the field, using the trucks in this area. We're waiting on the approval from the cities. We have to have at least four of the cities approve the joining back up with the county. As of that meeting, we weren't there, but we're hoping to have that by the end of the year so we can officially kick that off. I don't, last acting city manager, has that come back to our council? The approval of the new joint powers for IWMA?
No, it has not come back yet. It's coming back January 9th, I believe.
So we won't do it this year? Okay.
That's right.
And then I did attend the REACH roundtable. A lot of interesting information there. I don't have any real specifics because it was really kind of all over the place. But a lot of, a lot of stuff that REACH is doing, particularly when you look out at Vanderburgh Air Force Base and the spaceport and those kinds of things. They do, they've got a lot going on right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Councilmember Guthrie, what will they, like, are they going to train the waste collectors? Like, if, if the camera detects lithium batteries, will they actually stop and go in and remove it from the trash?
No, they'll leave, they'll just leave the trash. They won't pick it up at all and they'll report it.
So it'll, so when they lift up the can, it detects it and they just put the can back down?
Exactly.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah. Once they, yeah.
So piggyback on that as far as the green waste because we're trying to reduce our green waste and put more into the compost bin. We were told that they would have cameras for that as well. Are they doing that yet?
Well, I think they can, I think they can see, they can see what gets dumped already.
Okay.
But it's not, that's, that's the driver picking up what's coming through. In order to try to pick up people who are maybe putting stuff in there they shouldn't. I believe that by the time they see it, it's too late. Because if you think when you watch it, it's dumping it, it's opening and dumping at the same time. But, but that would be on the driver, that particular camera.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Seacrest?
Thank you. Just very briefly, Air Pollution Control District Board is actually meeting tomorrow. So I'll be attending that. And the South County Chambers of Commerce, just a little tidbit, but they're coming out with their 2024 Visitor and Community Guide, which they describe as a beautiful, full-color glossy magazine, which will highlight chamber members, but also our own community as an amazing place to live, work, and play. So that's what I have.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, and then I will update you on my two committees. Let's see. We had a Zone 3 committee, a Zone 3 meeting on November 16th. At that time, the lake was 94.9% full at 46,000 acre feet. With the projections of rain that the county has put together, they anticipate that we will still be, we, we, we won't hit the 40,000 acre feet until December of 2024. Wait. We'll be at 40,000 acre feet or above, even if we have the rain they predicted. So, so we're still in good shape, obviously. We have many, many capital projects underway. And we have a decent budget to be able to do that. And a lot of the projects is, a lot of them are infrastructure that's gotten old and it's just time. And a lot of those projects are sort of lumped together to be proactive, to save the taxpayers in the long run because we were doing one project. It saved us money to do another small one at the same time. And most of it has to do with aging infrastructure. So that was really all. It was like a 15-minute meeting for Zone 3. And then the Homeless Services Oversight Council met on November 15th. A couple of updates from some nonprofits that regularly attend those meetings. People Self-Help Housing, they have housed 11 vets this year. And then 25 other non-veterans on Broad Street in San Luis Obispo. And let's see, Echo was approved at the Board of Supervisors for three years of additional funding for 20 more beds in Paso Robles, which would bring them to 130 beds total. And they have housed 168 individuals this year. Back in the middle of the month, there was, I think there was some rain projected that day. And they talked about that Capslow was the only warming center that was going to be open in the county. I don't know about the other ones, but I know the Five Cities Homeless Coalition that's here in South County could not open due to a lack of location at that time. I think they're working on their South County location. They're slated to open in January, hopefully. There's a new nonprofit that's a street outreach group called 805 Street Outreach. And the, the person who has put that together introduced herself at our meeting. Let's see, the point in time count is going to be January 23rd for the county. And we need volunteers for that. There was a lot of discussion about when it should, the count should start. And so the good news is it's not going to be 4:30 AM. It's now going to be 7:00 AM. So maybe we'll get some more volunteers. There was a lot of back and forth about why one time was, was better than the other. There is a new way that we are, we have to do the count a little bit differently. In the, in the past, we've counted the people that were unhoused that day, but then gone back and done a survey that's required later. This time, it's going to be what a lot of communities do, are both of those things at once. So we'll count the individuals and do the survey at the same time. And there's all kinds of reasons why that's better. So that, those are all my reports. Yes?
So last year, the point in time was done during the rain. And speaking to a few people who participated in the accounting, they didn't believe it was an accurate point in time because of the rain. So was that discussed and whether or not it would be postponed and rescheduled upon rain?
No.
rain?
No, I remember those discussions from years in the past. And I remember, there's, I remember this discussions and the pros and the cons and why we couldn't change it, or, but this discussion we just had at the H-SOC, it was, there was no discussion of weather. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, a question as well. So I know that the county's been working toward having a single database, continuum of care database. Is that going to be in place for this count?
I think that that's, we're kind of in, I don't think it's completely finished. And judging from the conversations at the H-SOC, I feel like we're almost there, but I'm not sure by January it will. But that's, yeah, the, I forget what it's called. It's the input, it's the HMIS, something informational system, anyway. HMIS, they, yeah, that's everyone's, all the nonprofits are really happy about that, because all of the information is going to be shared amongst everybody, and there won't be duplicative records and such. So, okay. All right, then if there's no other questions or comments, we will go ahead and move on to, what? Public comment on the reports? Okay, I'll go ahead and open up public comment on the city council reports. If there's anyone from the public or online who would like to come forward on the council reports, please do so at this time.
Hello, my name is Alexandria Davis. I have a question about councilmember Guthrie's report. So regarding the lithium detection in the garbage trucks, do we know how that will impact communal dumpsters for apartments?
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? And is there anyone online who would like to provide public comment?
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your There are no raised hands.
Okay, thank you for that. And then bringing that back to the council, if councilmember Guthrie would like to address that.
Sure. I'll just say it's still in the development stage. I'm sure that that will be a primary, they will have a way to do that as well, as well as individual trash cans at home. Because obviously, those are even a more probable location than even the residential ones. So not just apartments, but commercial property in general.
Okay. Thank you, councilmember Guthrie. All righty, then we will move on to item number eight, which is community comments and suggestions. If there's anyone from the public or online who would like to come up and speak with the council and provide public comment, now is the time to do that. And this would be items that are not on the agenda this evening. See, no one from the chambers? Is there anyone online?
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your There are no raised hands.
Okay, thank you for that. And we will go ahead and close public comment, and we'll come back to the council for the item number nine, which is the consent agenda. And this is a group of items that can sometimes be voted on in one action. And is there anyone from the council that would like to pull an item for separate consideration or a question?
I'd like to pull 9G, just for an update, please.
Okay. 9G, anyone else? All right, okay, all right, then let's go ahead with 9G. Councilmember George?
Thank you. At our last meeting, we, I had asked for some modifications to be made to the ordinance, and I just have Community Development Director Pedrati maybe read out those changes.
Thank you. Brian Pedrati, Community Development Director. Staff has made a few clerical and cleanup changes to the ordinance to reflect the request and consistency with the guidance provided by the city council at the previous public hearing for this ordinance. The changes are to Section B 3A, very minor, where you're removing an extra period in a space that was in there. And then cleanup language to add 500 square feet and whichever is less, which was the intent of the comments. And then additionally, staff has copied Section B 3B as a new B 2D, and that is the section that was put in there for remodels and described the criteria for which staff would determine whether or not backyard turf was infeasible, and we need to go to the front yard. We then copied that for new development as well, for residential development. And so those are the changes that staff has included.
Okay, thank you for that, Brian. Councilmember George, does that?
Yes, so for clarification, for the 3B, 3A, you added the 500 square feet, or, so you also have the 25%, right?
Correct.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, Brian. And if there's no further questions on the consent agenda, then I would go ahead and open up the consent agenda to the public for comment. That's item 9A through 9G. Anyone would like to speak on those items, please come forward and do so now. Go ahead, City Attorney Rosen.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So I just wanted to note, in follow-up to Brian's comment, following public comment and before the council votes, that those minor modifications that Brian read into the record, those are minor changes beyond what was published. So if council votes to approve consent calendar tonight for item 9G, it would be as amended based on those minor modifications Brian read into the record. And we're here if there are any questions about that.
Okay, okay, thank you for that. All righty, then, are there any comments, public comment online? Jessica?
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your There are no raised hands.
Okay, thank you for that. Then I'll go ahead and bring it back to the council. And if anyone has any comments or questions, or if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor Protem, I'd like to move council approve consent agenda items 9A through 9G. 9G as amended with minor modifications read into the record.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Barnage?
Yes. All righty, thank you, everyone, for that. Moving on to item number 10, which are public hearings. And this evening, we have item 10A, which is to consider a resolution for the installation of one domestic well. And that item, I don't know if there's any, staff can comment on that, or I was just going to read the continuance, but go ahead. Would you like me just to read the?
Yeah, that works. I was going to read it as well.
Okay, okay. So we are, on October 24th, the public hearing was open and continued to a date certain of November 28th. And staff is now requesting that this item be considered on January 9th, 2024, and we'll re-notice the public hearing. And so with that, I'd entertain a motion to move that to January 9th.
I move we continue the item per staff's recommendation.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Barnage?
Yes. All righty, thank you for that. Moving on to item 11, which is old business. 11A is a consideration of an award of contract to ADT Commercial LLC for construction of the Public Safety Camera System Project, PW 2023-10, and find the action exempt from CEQA. And with that, we have Ms. Sweeney, I believe, to give us the staff report on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. My name is Shannon Sweeney. I'm city engineer, and I'm here to provide you information regarding, for your consideration regarding the notice of award for the City Borough Grande Public Safety Camera Project. As he's finding the next slide. There's a bit of background associated with this project. It started back in 2016, when a citywide camera system was put into place. The camera system fairly quickly became obsolete and inoperable. And as a result, in 2022, the police department issued a request for proposals, and they received several proposals associated with that. But they were very difficult to compare apples to apples, just by virtue of the way those RFPs were written. And so in August 2023, it was brought to city council with a rejection of those previous bids and permission to go back out to bid. So in August and September of 2023, we put a city project team together. Project team developed specifications and determined where those camera locations should be. We advertised that project in September of 2023, and in October 2023, five bids were received. The project team had five members, that included two commanders from the police department, the entire information technology team, and myself. And we had several elements that we needed to work through. The first one was the project structure itself. Did we want to bring in a consultant that would design and provide the product? Or did we want to do a notice inviting bids where we defined what it is we wanted and then did a low bid? And we determined that we knew basically what we wanted, and therefore did a notice inviting bids with minimum specifications. We then decided, based on our specifications, did we want to do it on features, tell the potential bidders what the features of the cameras needed to be? Or did we want to do it on performance? We determined that we would do it on performance. That way, the bidders could choose the kinds of equipment that could meet the performance we were looking for and not be tied into any particular brand. And then the locations, we started out with a list of 60 potential locations, and we ended up paring it down, because a number of those locations were on private businesses. Or turns out that you can't just put a camera on a PG&E light pole, they don't belong to us. So what we ended up with is cameras only in public facilities, such as the public buildings, or in parks, or on traffic signals whose poles belong to the city. That way, we didn't have to deal with rent agreements or right-of-way issues. So all the cameras are located in public locations. The funding for this project involves both COPS, community-oriented policing services, I believe that stands for, and then ARPA, which is the American Rescue Act. And the total amount that was available was $1.125 million. We ended up with those five bids, and they ranged from $430,000 and change to almost $950,000 in change. And our low bid was ADT Commercial Limited. Their bid was responsive, and it was for $430,411. Ordinarily, I would come and request that council provide a 10% contingency, but this is a technological project that involves some unknowns, given technology, and so I'm requesting a 20% contingency, resulting in a total cost of $516,493, well within the budget that was provided. So you might ask, and somebody did, that's why I anticipated this question, is maybe the low bid provided a really low installation cost, because they're going to ding us on annual costs? So what we did was we took those five companies, and we showed their base bid there on the left-hand side of this table. And then the required annual amount, so you can see the required annual amount, this is to keep the system operable. Technical support and answering questions and keeping the system running ranged from $20,000 and change all the way up to $95,000. And the company that was low bid ended up right in the middle at $45,000. And then I multiplied that by five years. Now, how much would it be after five years? And what you will see is the cost after five years for the low bid still remains well below the remaining four bids there, if you look at the column that says cost after five years. The, and then there was, when we interviewed the low bid company, we asked them, so what exactly is involved with that annual cost? And they said, well, that involves keeping the system running, but we also recommend that you consider the software licensing, as well as a preventive maintenance. We said, why didn't you include those? Well, because they're not required. You know, your preventive maintenance can be whatever you want it to be, and so that's why it didn't get folded in originally. But when you add the required annual plus the recommended, it ends up being $73,800, which is the amount that actually recommends that we pay each year to keep the system running and running well. You can see the total amount after five years, including the base, is still under $800,000, which still has it lower than the remaining four companies. So that makes me feel confident that they didn't just low bid the installation, that we are still getting a good product even after five years, even when considering not just the required, but also the recommended costs. So I wanted to be able to show where the cameras are located. And you can see these yellow pins are scattered throughout towns. The ones on the peripheries are your parks. You can see Struther Park way over there on the right, and Rancho Park way up there on the north. There are some clusters of pins, and those clusters of pins are at some of the public facilities. And here are some details of those. So on the left, you can see in the village, so the pin on the very south is at the Heritage Park. You can see the three on the very right. The picture on the left is City Hall, and then you've got a couple there in the village. And then the picture on the right is Elm Street Park and Public Works. And so you can see the cameras throughout the park and the public buildings as well. So because we really wanted to make sure that we understood what we were getting, we did probably a little bit more than normal in terms of evaluating the low bid. First thing we did was make sure that they followed all the rules of public contracting. They did their math right, and they included all of their paperwork. We also spent some time making sure that the product that they included in their bid met the specifications. IT found out that one of them didn't, one of the elements they had included didn't quite meet it, and so the company came back and gave us paperwork demonstrating a product that did. We called the references. We called municipalities that have these systems, cities of Long Beach and Corona, gave us very favorable responses, not just to the product being installed, but also to the company installing it. That gives us a level of confidence that they know what they're doing when it comes to municipalities. They also do SpaceX and Nestle, so, you know, not exactly related, but cool nonetheless. We also brought them in and interviewed them, asked them questions, asked for a demonstration of the interface. Just wanted to make sure that this was something that we would be very comfortable with. And then, as I expressed earlier, we questioned their annual costs to fully understand what it is we were getting into, so that we go into it with our eyes as open as possible. So at this point, staff would like to make a recommendation that we award this contract for the Public Safety Camera System to ADT Commercial LLC in the amount of $430,411, that we authorize the city manager to approve change orders of 20% of the contract amount, which is $86,082.21, for unanticipated costs during the construction phase of the product project, and to determine that this project is categorically exempt from CEQA. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you for that. Wonderful staff report, detailed, I appreciate that. Does council have any questions for Ms. Sweeney?
I just have one question regarding Van...
I just have one question regarding vandalism. Did ADT speak to how to mitigate vandalism of cameras?
The cameras are placed up at an elevation, making it harder to reach. But no, we didn't, we didn't speak to that either in the notice inviting bids or ask them specifically about that question. I think our focus was more on the vandalism. We were hoping that it catches, not the vandalism that would happen on their product. But that is certainly a question I can ask them during the pre-construction meeting so that is something that we can evaluate as the product is being installed. Thank you.
And is that, is that part of maintenance? In that if one gets torn down, we just call them and they come in? Obviously, we pay for it, but they come and put a new one back up?
Yes, that's part of that. $45,000 is that they have people who will come and make those repairs. And during the interview, we asked them specifically about that. Where would your, you know, technical person be coming from? And they said that they have people throughout. So, you know, they're not coming from a super far distance. Even informed us that they would throw the particular, you know, repair items on their vehicle so that they would come prepared for the types of things that typically go wrong with these cameras. But if we do end up with a vandalism problem, that's going to be something that we will sit down and have some serious conversations about. It's what we're hoping that it solves, not something that gets created.
And then in your, in your meeting with them and the not example demonstration that they did, were the images clear? Were they easy to see? Because, you know, help us find this person. And it's like this fuzzy gray picture with someone wearing it and you can't really tell them from Adam. So were these cameras more high-definition?
The demonstration did show that you could see what was going on. They demonstrated things such as if you were, the example was the red truck. I don't know why it was a red truck. But it was okay if you wanted to track this red truck through town, then you could ask the other cameras, okay, keep an eye out for this red truck so that you would be able to follow it through town. The technology these days is just amazing. And although I will tell you that we weren't thrilled by the demonstration at the interview, IT Kevin Waddy did, did a little bit of extra homework to ask other municipalities about the particular software, the interface, and they just had nothing but glowing things to say. I think Mr. Waddy ended up being a convert that it was the best product that we could get for the, for the type of work that we were hoping that this system does.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you for answering my questions.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Thank you. That's a great presentation and very, I know, comment, but very excited that this is coming to fruition. I know it took a lot of work. So the question is, I understand what you're saying about not being able to place these on private businesses. But having said that, do we feel, in terms of where they are placed, that they will be able to facilitate crime issues or issues that normally that we would be trying to help the private businesses with? I'm thinking of bars, things like that.
So if I may, I will clarify. It isn't that we can't put them on private businesses, but rather that we did not wish to hold up the project as a whole by working on the rental agreements or lease agreements or those sorts of things. So it's not that that won't happen in the future, but it's something that we were interested in moving forward with the system and wanted to. We were getting a lot of interest in getting, getting the system in place. So that's why we really focused on them going in public locations. So that is certainly something, we called it Phase Two as we were working through it. Oh, that's a Phase Two camera. So, so just, I wanted to make sure I clarified that. But yes, we were looking at the location of the cameras specifically so that we could get the coverage that would help in places where activities might happen, such as there are three cameras in the village. One on the traffic pole at Mason, one at the traffic pole of Traffic Way, and one on top of this building, and then three at City Hall. That will help canvas this area. And then as time goes on, we will use that experience to determine what other locations might be suitable to take the step into Phase Two.
That's great, thank you.
Yes, if I could add, just like Shannon was mentioning, our police commanders were heavily involved with the decision-making and the camera placement. We have hotspots in our city and in our village where we've had some crime activity. And, you know, they, they made sure that we covered those pretty well at this, at this juncture. And we think we can cover, have some, some high level of confidence to cover those areas so that if there is an incident that we can come back and take a look at the footage and make some headway on apprehending people, et cetera.
Okay. Councilmember Guthrie?
Yeah, so first off, thank you for coming in way under budget, tightening up that RFP. I, I always thought that was a bit high, but, but I really appreciate that, of course. My question is sort of related to that. When I look at Olinhan Alley, which is an area where we've had significant problem and have a lot of activity, just parking and all those kinds of things, but there's no camera there. There's light posts, there's other opportunities. I wonder why, and maybe that was the question for the police.
So there is a camera on the other side of the bridge at Heritage Park. And you're right, we, and the commanders did express an interest there. And we were struggling with trying to find a public, you know, public facility that also had power. The gazebo might have been an option. Short, I want to say short, street bathroom has one.
What are we using over on the car corral?
There is a separate pole. There is actually a pole that is not a PG&E pole that is adjacent to a PG&E pole.
So we couldn't use?
That is specific, that specifically has a camera on it and nothing else.
All right, so we couldn't use one of the lighting fixtures in?
They don't belong to us. Light, light posts that don't belong to us would require rental.
Even in the parking lot across the way?
That's a new thing. PG&E, after the fires, PG&E won't allow you to hook anything because of the liability associated with it. That now they want studies and rent money and all kinds of things, so.
All right, thank you.
Just two questions. Do these cameras that are on the traffic signals, are they, they don't, they're not qualified as like license plate readers, are they?
These are not specific license plate readers. We didn't, they, we didn't buy them as such. So no, they are not what you would call license plate readers.
Okay. Did they, as far as like, they're in other cities, there's, those are becoming popular because of crime. And then the cars go from one city to the next. And you can catch someone who's committed a crime in another city. In one city that has the license plate readers, it's pretty phenomenal that it's just instantly, it reads the license plate, feeds it into something, and they've been really effective. Has, did ADD talk about that? Or was that like an add-on? Or is that anything we've ever heard about for our city at all, them suggesting?
We have one license plate reader over near the base of St. Patrick's or St. Pat's School on West Branch Street.
Oh, okay.
That was something that was given to us through the Sheriff's Department.
Oh.
We were looking at that software through some grant programs to enhance the, the number of cameras throughout the city, but that's one that we're testing out right now.
Oh, cool, okay, thank you. And then my other question is, as far as the, are we going to put signs that you're being recorded, like just for instance, over? So it's a deterrent because if they can't really see the cameras, the vandalism that's occurring, they might not even know they're there. So are we putting signs up that say they're being recorded?
I can already think of numerous places where those signs would be, yes.
Okay, awesome. Okay, so if there's no more questions from the council, I will go ahead. One more question, Councilmember George?
Sorry, piggyback question off of that. Are they required, are we required to have your being recorded signs?
I think the short answer is no. There are certain instances depending on a reasonable expectation of privacy. So I think, and I don't doubt that staff is looking into sort of the specifics based on where the camera locations are. But I would say since they are in public facilities, there's not an overarching requirement that would apply to each.
Yeah, that, yeah, that covers the, that, that privacy issue because it's, it's in all, all public places, streets, sidewalks, Olinhan Alley, so, and some parks. So those are just public viewing areas and can have camera located, cameras located there.
And how long do we store the footage for? And is it stored within the city or does ADT store it?
So we had put that as one of our minimum specifications. And I want to say it was 60 days.
60 days.
And then with the ability to take any information that's considered evidentiary and easily be able to offload it to separate storage for evidentiary purposes.
Okay, so after 60 days, we have no record after 60 days?
Except for that, that has been pulled off specifically for evidence.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no more questions from the council, I will go ahead and open this up to the public. Anyone who would like to come forward and make comments on this item, please do so at this time.
Hello, my name's Judy Chiketti. So I don't know how long the last ones lasted. How long are these guaranteed for? Does anybody know? And then also when they're mounted, I know I live by the bus barn and they mounted some and they have really bright lights. So will there be really bright lights when they mount that camera? Or will they be able to pick up without a big shiny bright light? So those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to come forward?
I've got two things. One, I've heard sometimes, especially with software and public contracts, companies will piecemeal out their features and charge separately, but not include that in the initial bid and not make it obvious. So my question is, do we know that all the expected and required features are included in this initial bid? And the other thing is, when it comes to cameras, they're obviously sitting out there recording things. The better they are, the more private data they, they can collect. Do we know who's responsible for making sure that data stays where it's supposed to stay?
Okay, thank you for those comments and questions. And seeing no one else in the audience, we'll go ahead and check in online and see if there's any members of the public.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
All right, thank you for that. And then if staff wanted to address, looks like we have maybe four questions. Would you like to take that, Shannon?
Happy to.
Okay, thank you.
So question number one, are there any bright lights? None of these cameras have lights external to them. Question number two had to do with how long they're anticipated to last. As with any sort of technology, we don't expect, you know, more than about eight years just in terms of, of technology. However, with the preventive maintenance program that we're hoping can be funded on an annual basis, we hope that we can extend that longer than that eight years.
Next one was, are all the features included?
Yes, so that was one of the purposes of the product, project team was to develop the list of specifications. The low bid gave us the specification sheets of the cameras that we were going to receive. And then we made sure that those were all listed in there. And also we are making sure that the cameras that we are getting are off-the-shelf and non-proprietary, open source. And what that means is that they can't just piece these cameras together in a garage, that you have to be able to buy them off the shelf. And by having open source, it doesn't tie us to proprietary technology. So those were things that the product team worked very hard to put together to make sure that we are going to have ourselves the most reliable and long-lasting system that we could put together.
Okay, and then the final question was the, the data that's being collected. Is this that safe? What does that end up just with us, with ADT? How is that was determined?
Right, so the information is going to be fed into the police department. Those people with the access to it will be the people who are able to retrieve it. I don't believe there's any way that we can have ADT not have access to it because they are technical support and being able to provide that by telephone. And if there's any portions I missed, Mr. Waddy? Did I miss anything?
Yes, ma'am.
Please.
Madam Mayor, pro temp and counsel, good evening.
Good evening.
So to answer, good job. The cameras are 4K resolution, so they're the highest performing camera that's available right now. So that answers your question. There are no lights on the cameras, but they are infrared, so they, they work in the dark. So we'll get plenty of visibility. And what else? Yeah, that's it, okay, that's it, thank you.
Okay, and then did you want to add something about the, about the data? Or was that, I mean, I think Ms. Sweeney answered that, but?
Yes, the cameras will only be accessible from the police department's network. No one else will have access to that. ADT, if we offload to the cloud, they will. But all, all camera fees will go into the police network, police network server. All the data will stay there unless it's offloaded to another application that the police department will use. So it's highly secure.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Waddy, thank you, Ms. Sweeney. Okay, question, another question, Councilmember Seacrest? We're going to talk about that next. That's the next on the agenda.
So, thank you very much. And do these collect audio data?
They have the ability to, if we turn that feature on, yes, but we're not going to turn that feature on unless, you know, we can kind of, if that's available to us or if that's something allowed, then we can do that, but initially no.
I can tell you law enforcement's gonna, that's gonna be very useful if it is, depending.
Yeah, and the system is expandable to allow that kind of functionality.
Great, thank you, and thank you.
Okay, anyone else, any more questions? Okay, if not, then I think that we're ready to entertain a motion.
So I'll just do comments real quick.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
We can do that first, too.
I just, thank you. Thank you for the thoughtful selection process. Thank you for digging deeper, even more than what they were willing to demonstrate. I, I can tell that Mr. Waddy, this is just your cup of tea, right? Just what you love, love to do. And I, I'm happy you have something new and exciting to play with for a little while. Thank you to the project team, Public Works. Ms. Sweeney, I know you've, you've done a lot of work with this, Mr. Waddy and, and to PD. So if you could please relay my thank you to PD. I'm really looking forward to this, these cameras being installed. We have needed them for quite a while. I think when I first came on council, we went to a city council training up in Sacramento and they had an expo and one of the booths that we went to visit. They were our old camera providers and they said we were out, out of date back then. So we've just been really, really needing these cameras. Thank you for coming in under budget. I echo what Councilmember Guthrie said. It's, it's a pretty nice day when we can see things come under budget and not spend more. That being said, it would be nice, if it's possible, because I do know that a lot of people in the public would like to know where the cameras are. If we could do some sort of a, an infographic, letting people know that the cameras are coming in, some basic information, like just some of the questions, like they won't have lights. And I think a little series of infomercials would be really nice. City Clerk Mattson, if we could get something like that and just to, a graphic to show people where the cameras are going to go. That would be helpful, but I am definitely ready to move forward and make a motion after the rest of council has a chance to comment.
Okay, Councilmember Seacrest?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm also very enthused. I'd echo council member George's comments. Infrared seems great. I, I know this was, this was an issue way before I came to the council and I learned a lot about what can go wrong. I had no idea. Some of the issues, I know the proprietary situation and the outdated tech were huge issues. These can be so incredibly helpful in solving crimes. I think everyone is just very excited to see it go forward. We really appreciate all of your work. You've obviously done a lot of deep diving into this. I would, I understand the 20% contingency requested. That makes sense. Excited if there can be audio at some point, just because that's really helpful. I, it doesn't seem to me that what you're speaking about would be private data being gathered. It's, it sounds like it's images of folks in public. So I don't have a concern about there being a problem with that. And other than that, I'm ready to move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Guthrie?
Yeah, I'm also ready to move forward. I'll just say I was here when we got the very first ones. It's sort of a little good, too good to be true at that time that, you know, we got a lot of cameras for not very much money. And it turned out that every time you wanted to actually look at them, you had to pay some guy a thousand bucks to come up and download the information. So from day one, they were actually not very functional.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I remember when we got them, it was really exciting for like 10 minutes. That's how I felt. And then it was like, well, what happened? We don't ever have, we don't ever get the footage or no, it was like, yeah, immediately. Anyway, so I'm excited about this. I think they are really effective. And I mean, just, just the cameras on our front porch, look how much information and wildlife, you know, traffic we gain on that. So, okay. Well, then now I really am ready to entertain a motion for realsies.
Okay. We'll try one, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. I move the city council, city borough Grande awarded contract for the public safety camera system project to ADT Commercial LLC in the amount of $430,411 in substantially final form, subject to any minor technical or non-substantive changes approved by the city manager in consultation with the city attorney. I also moved that we authorize the city manager to approve change orders of 20% of the contract amount in the amount of $86,082.21 for unanticipated costs during the construction phase of the project. And finally, I move that we determine that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA.
Second? All righty. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Barnage?
Yes. All right. Thank you for that. Moving on to new business, item number 12, 12A, appointment of city manager and approval of employment agreement. We are continuing that to our next meeting of December 12. Okay. Anything else on that, Mr. Rosen?
Uh, no.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Then that will take us to item number 12B, which is consideration of an agreement with A-Town AV for council chamber audio video system project upgrade and request to approve a budget adjustment request and find the action exempt from CEQA. And Mr. Wadi is going to present that staff report. Good evening once again.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. Kevin Wadi, IT manager. I'm here to speak to you concerning the upgrade of the audio video system in the council chamber. Here's some information, some background. The installation of the current system was completed in April 2017, along with a building remodel. The system facilitates high-quality in-person meetings as well as broadcasting to channel 20 for public viewing. During the COVID restrictions of 2020, Zoom was added to the public participation portion of the meeting. Beginning in spring of 2023, council and staff started reporting more frequent audio issues, garbled audio, poor quality sound or underwater sounding over Zoom. Also, microphone functionality issues were reported. Difficulty muting or unmuting, difficult to tell if the mics were muted. And I saw a lot of difficulties tonight. All equipment has exceeded the five-year warranty and some equipment is discontinued. Older but tried and true technologies were used seven years ago. However, new and more advanced technology is available now. In October 2023, the city issued an RFP for an upgrade to the audio video system. A-Town AV was the, the most responsive bidder with a proposal of $193,790.10. Public access television or PEG special revenue fund included a target for this project, a budget totaling $180,000. The proposal includes the following. Upgrades to the control room. The system will be network-based. This will give us more and easier control of the system. The system will be digital. This will eliminate the need for the analog to digital converters, which we currently have, which can cause some of the audio issues that we have been experiencing. The audio video streaming device will be upgraded. This will replace a discontinued and out-of-warranty device that is used for broadcasting live and recordings through channel 20. In addition to the above, existing microphones will be replaced with new wireless mics that can integrate with camera feeds. This allows automatic camera switching based on which microphone is unmuted should the city decide to move in this direction. Pismo Beach and San Luis Obispo use these same microphones in a fully automated way. They have the ability to automatically capture names and titles based on inserted key cards. This information can be displayed in the lower third of all displays, including broadcasts. The above will minimize the need for an onsite producer. The mics have built-in speakers, as you can see. This can help speakers needing additional audio support during the meetings. As you can also see, the mics that I brought, they have easily accessible mute, unmute buttons. And the buttons also double as electronic voting system if we choose to go in this direction. New network-based cameras will be installed. These can integrate with the microphones and facilitate automated camera switching, thereby reducing the need for an onsite producer should the city move to a fully automated process. The cameras have 4K resolution, future-proofing the system for higher quality broadcasting. New laser projectors will be about 40% brighter, providing a sharper and clearer image. Having a lower profile makes them less obtrusive in the room. One existing laser projector will be retained as a backup, providing some fault tolerance. In October of 2023, I missed a slide. Excuse me. There's a slide missing. That's okay. In October of 2023, the city, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Recommendation, Mayor and Council, staff recommends council approve an agreement with A-Town AV for design and installation for the contract amount of $193,790.10 and approve a budget adjustment of $13,800 for the remainder of the project costs. I'd be happy to answer any questions and provide any more detail if the council would like me to go into detail. And additionally, I've brought Jason Allen, the president of A-Town AV, in the, in the audience to help answer more technical questions. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wadi. Any questions for Kevin? Councilmember George?
I'm married to someone in IT and I share a lot of frustrations with him on a daily basis because he does stuff to our house and makes me want to. And one of the things that he does is he networks everything and everything is automated. And I can't just turn on my light because it does it itself. And what I found with the automation and with the networking is before, when I could just plug something in, I just, it works. But with networks, networks go down all the time. Do we have any safeguard or any backup for when the network goes down?
Well, you know, like I said in the presentation, Pismo Beach and San Luis Obispo are fully automated, which can, like you said, seems, should be great, but it doesn't give you the highest quality and doesn't give you a lot of control. So whereas this system will give us that ability to go fully automated, we're going to be more of a hybrid, right? That gives us more control in, in the room. We will have some producer functionalities that either staff will take on or our city clerk will take on more duties or,
Yay.
Right? Or, or we'll use a pro services contract team that will do some of those, you know, you know, on, on the spot type of changes. Networking is actually, makes things a lot easier and a lot, and networking is redundant. So if it's done right.
It makes it easier.
You would think, yes. So my, you know, Jason, would you like to answer more definitely about the networking portion?
Yeah. So the, the network piece of it, it, I, I understand 100%. My wife feels the same way that you feel at my house. And so this system is, is not a, from when it says network, when we say it's network-based, all the devices live on our network, but we're not automating everything. It's a closed network, so it doesn't get modified. Once it's set up, it's very stable. We run these in dozens and dozens of sites and don't have downtime failures. Now, like anything, there are components that fail for whatever reason. That's where the warranty piece comes in. That's where our company comes in. We're, you know, here in Arroyo Grande, so we're able to be very responsive to that. So I'm not saying that nothing will ever happen, but this system is a very stable system and all of the components are designed and certified to work together. So it's not my company saying we're going to try to rig this item with that item. It's the, the manufacturers all have come and certified that all of their devices work together and will be reliable for this kind of a system.
So during a meeting, when something goes down or something doesn't work, then, am I understanding, Mr. Wadi, either someone from your company or sweet Jessica or someone else will be here to fix, fix the issue? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, that's correct. And some of the fixes will, can be remote. So let's say that's something that we can't handle, but a pro services team like A-Town can, they can jump on remotely and resolve most issues.
Okay. Those are my questions for now. Thank you. Councilmember Seacrest? Okay. Councilmember Guthrie?
Yeah. So I think it's the most microphone-challenged person up here. I do have a couple of questions. I'll just tell you, I use these. I had one of my committee meetings at the city of San Luis Obispo and I'm just as challenged there. It does not turn on when you press the button either. I think it's related to that they limit the number of microphones that can be on at a time.
They do. Yes.
Will these be limited?
No. Right now, the current system doesn't limit how many microphones are going to be on and, and that would continue. We don't have the same feedback issues that.
That they, for whatever reasons, they have them.
Correct.
Okay. That's my only question. Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay. Thank you. Was A-Town's, I thought A-Town was a Tascadero.
Originally, we were in a Tascadero. Yeah.
Okay. Cause I was like, oh, A-Town's AG now? Okay.
Yep. 100%.
Okay. Thank you. All righty. So we will go ahead and open this item up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to come forward to speak to the council this evening?
Yeah, I am the kind of tech person that George has probably felt dealing with. And I can say that software, the kind that would be in place here is probably not the kind that you experienced at home, just because you spend more time closing the edge stuff so that people don't have to deal with them if you're not the one who's using them. But before doing this, I'd like to say thank you to the tech that's already in here. It's allowed me to join during Zoom meetings, but also I can definitely see the need for upgrades. I know there was one meeting where we had a presenter and I just couldn't hear him because the audio didn't come through. So that is something that I'd like on the AV team's radar to make sure that piece is working. The question that I have is, will any of the equipment be locked to a proprietary software that might disappear? When I say might disappear, I mean, like you can only get it from one company and if they go out of business, you don't have any alternatives. That's my.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward in the audience? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll go check in online.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then I don't know who would like to answer the question that the public speaker made.
We will be using non-proprietary industry standard broadcasting software. From any vendor can procure that for us.
Okay. All righty. Thank you for that. And then I'll go ahead and bring it back to council and who, I will go over here with Councilmember Guthrie for comments.
Yeah, I'm certainly in favor of moving forward. I'm actually not as nervous about the, going to the next step where we would have the automatic cameras. I've watched them. They work pretty good at Pismo. They do require a certain amount of training for the people sitting behind that you don't make too much noise. So you don't suddenly end up on camera. But I think that would be my one hesitation. Maybe we should do it all at once. But I'm certainly in favor of, we have had significant problems, particularly with the, I'll call it the translator, has been a big problem for us in the last year. So I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Seacrest?
I'm in favor of moving forward. I do have this slight paranoia now. Is it possibly user error? But I think it's not. So I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember George?
My husband blames everything on user error. I'm just going to say. I am definitely in favor of moving forward and I look forward to any way that our, our city moves forward technologically. I think that when we embrace technology and we use it to our advantage, it, it benefits everyone. So I'm definitely ready to move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I am ready to move forward as well. And I would look for a motion.
I would move that the council approve an agreement with A-Town AV for the design installation services for audio video, video system project upgrade and approve the, approve a budget adjustment request.
Okay. I have a motion second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Barnage?
Yes.
All righty. That brings us to item number 13 with it, which is council communications. And does anyone have anything to communicate? Councilmember George?
Today is Giving Tuesday. So it's a celebration of global, global giving to organizations. So I encourage everyone here, and if anyone is listening, to support your local organizations that do really good for our community and give a little bit if you can.
Okay. Thank you for that. Councilmember Seacrest, Councilmember Guthrie, anything? The only thing that I'd just briefly add is that I'll just keep this really short. If you have solar and you live in Arroyo Grande and you did not opt out and you are with three CE, I would encourage you to reach out to them for a comparison rate analysis with PG&E. They do it. It's really simple. Mine was noteworthy. And so I think it's just information that you need to have. And then you can make a good decision going forward. And then, okay, then if there's no more council communications, we will go ahead and move forward to continue our closed session at this time. Correct, Isaac?
Correct. And just to note that the council will adjourn its open session piece and move to closed session. And we will provide any reportable action as well at the next meeting.
Okay. All right. Good night, everyone. Thank you.